K L T V sound check, K L T V sound check. K L T V sound check, K L T V sound check.
She didn't speak, but it's recording.
She didn't speak, but we're on.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
She was shy this morning, she wouldn't talk, so. Welcome to the Tuesday meeting of the B O C C. If you'd like to join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic which stands one nation, united in the individual liberty of us all.
Okay. Through one of the minutes, Commissioner Morrison.
Good morning, everyone. One official time.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Any corrections, comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for both those in favor. Right, thank you. I'll run through consent agenda, a couple items to note today. We do have two public hearings, one at 9:30 and one at 9:45, so have to be cognizant of those times. Consent agenda agreement, contracts, bid awards. We have an interlocal agreement between the city of Castle Rock and Callas County relating to building code administration, plans, examination, building expansion, services, and fire code. They reached out to us and asked to work with the county. They presently use a private firm, I think, up in, based out of Olympia or in that area. And they'd like to work with the county for building expansions and stuff on their projects, so. N C interlocal agreement with them. Resolutions, we're changing, we have a building and planning advisory council. And we're changing the date to better fit some of the people on there. We have a lot of people that are business people and stuff, so we're changing the date on that. When we do that, the resolution establishing that council has to be changed to affect the new date. So that's what this resolution is. It's to rescind or replace 24-063, reestablishing the building and planning advisory council with a new date and time. Letters of correspondence, we have one to Rusty Williams, appointed to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, representing large industry, a two-year term. That will run through the end of March. I think that's 2025, right?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? And letter to. I know Ms. Hal Palmer, reporting to the planning commission, representing District Number Two. It's a four-year term that will expire the end of January 2028. And vouchers, approval of expenditures for grade inch improvement, District Number One incurred in August in the amount of $65,176 and $26 since. That's consent agenda. Questions, comments?
We're also removing one item.
I think they took it off.
Mr. Chairman, who would be approved today's consent agenda?
Okay, we have a motion to approve today's consent agenda. Questions, comments, anything on there? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote, those in favor. Hi, thank you. One motion item today, Youth and Health, Health and Human Services.
My name is Jane Jane Self, Human Services. We just have one item on the agenda today, it's a contract agreement, a grant agreement with Habitat for Humanity. We've talked with them several times over the last several months, on some projects they're working on. This contract will, it's a reimbursement-based contract up to $719,000 for those projects that to assist them in constructing millions of affordable housing as well as preserving.
Could you stop a moment? Did you see the message that had people resume that? We see the microphone.
I get Bob. When is she gonna go?
Okay. Probably should give it a couple minutes, so. See if they can get that fixed.
Hey Rick, could you tap your mic for me?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So just the sources too.
Tess, Tess.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Are you able to hear it now, Ms. Bales?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we have just the one item on the agenda. It's a grant agreement with Habitat for Humanity, up to $719,000 to support some projects that they're working on, both with constructing new units of affordable housing as well as preserving some existing affordable housing. We're using a combination of funding for this contract, including our state consolidated homeless grant document recording fees potentially, and then a portion of our 1406, which was the Affordable and Supportive Housing Sales and Use Tax.
So that sales.
Go ahead.
The sales tax is from the state's portion of the sales tax.
Correct.
And what are the amounts for that? Do you remember how that breaks out? How much comes from that sales tax amount?
Oh, it's. Oh, it's, we can only collect, collect reclaim from the state up to a certain amount each year. So I, mm, two to three hundred thousand per year, so it's not a lot that comes from that.
And the idea is to get as much as we can from the state grant, which is funded by the state's proportion of the document recording fees.
Correct.
Okay, that we collect and send up to them. And then the remainder would be coming from the doc recording fees that we keep in house.
Yep, yep. There's one project, the, their Brush with Kindness project that are preserving affordable housing, that will have to be fourteen zero six funds for that particular project, but the others will be our state or local document recording fees.
Now, I know that we have spent quite a bit of our document recording fees for affordable housing of different kinds within the city of Longview. Is this, this particular grant with Habitat is for outside the city of Longview since they get their own funds or, or not?
Um. The document recording fees that we receive aren't, you know, broken out by area, but the projects they're working on, there's one out in Lexington and one in Kelso for a pretty, pretty decent housing site where they're planning about fourteen units of housing, so.
And, and that fourteen unit subdivision is actually planned for the old lot on which the old Kelso High School used to stand, for those of us who've been around for a while and remember.
Yep.
Go ahead.
So, I, uh, clearly from things I've said in the past, I'm pretty fond of Habitat. And I've also said, there's always a concern that when we give chunk of money, things start to change. And I'm hoping you will keep an eye on that and make sure that we, we haven't destroyed a good thing. And Longos line, well, asking some more. Habitat, if I remember the numbers, they're kind of doing two homes a year kind of thing in this area.
That sounds, that sounds.
About right, yeah. And, and here we're presumably jumping the gun substantially. These are going to be treated not as fourteen apartment units, are they? Or are they going to be treated as fourteen individual dwellings? See, I don't think Habitat has done apartments before, have they?
Um, I don't think so, and I think they are houses, from what I remember. I can double check with them on that, but I think they were homes.
It just goes part and parcel with, we don't want to change formulation that does work well.
Yeah, because I think it's part of their homeownership program, so I think it'll be homes that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, in December thirty-one will come rather soon, in twenty twenty-five even. Is, is that going to be a problem?
We can always extend it if they're still working on these projects. We could come back and extend the agreement. Yeah.
Yeah, they, they, I'm also a fan of Habitat and they, they only do what they can self-fund, so it's been pretty limited over, over the years, and we had the opportunity to help them maybe put some more units down, so. I think there's fourteen here, and, and then I also like the, what do you call the Brush with Kindness program where they'll do some repairs on people's home to keep them in there, so they don't, so they don't get forced out of their home just based on repairs, so I think it's, it's good all the way around.
Along those lines, this is new ground for us, right? I don't recall us ever giving Habitat any money. Is that true?
Correct. Since I've been here anyways.
Yeah. So, I. Would you like a motion, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I, I move that we approve the reimbursement-based agreement with Calis County Habitat for Humanity, as has been described and discussed by staff.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Any questions, comments, on it at all?
Now, Commissioner Weber, you said it's on the location of the old Kelso High School, right up here at Academy?
Well, that's been vacant for so many years since.
Right.
Since they demolished the building.
Well.
Although the stairway is all the way down to.
Right. Down to the old Schroeder Field.
Schroeder Field is still there.
Yeah, I'm old enough to know to play on that field. I was just, I'm one of the guys that's old enough to know where the old Kelso High School was.
Anything else? Okay, call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple things, just today at one thirty, we will be having another budget workshop tomorrow. At one thirty, we have Public Works in, and, and at two thirty, looks like we're going to go over ARPA, America Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, update tomorrow. So this afternoon at one thirty, we will be doing some budget stuff. Tomorrow, we have a regular meeting with Public Works, and then at two thirty is a ARPA plan update. With that, I, I have till nine thirty for public comment, if you have comment.
Good morning. I just have a question about the Wednesday ARPA Rescue Plan Act meeting. Could you explain a little bit about what that might be about and can the public join in on that?
You certainly can join in.
Only in, in public, or can you do it through Zoom?
Well, it should be on Zoom. Everything we do is, is on Zoom. They, they, what do they do on a quarterly basis or every so often? They kind of give us a breakdown of where the funds are and where we're at with that.
And how they're being used.
Right.
So, so we have a major deadline at the end of this year where the money has to be allocated. There have been some projects that we've allocated that haven't been used. And so we're, we're monitoring that because we don't want to have to give that money back if, because we have other projects that they might qualify for. I know that's one of the things that we're monitoring.
Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder, those meetings are available on the website. That is to say, the recordings are available on the website.
Yeah. Anything else? You have a few minutes?
Are you ready, Commissioner Mortensen?
I beg your pardon?
Are you ready?
I'm always prepared for escaping.
I, I have some short questions. No criticisms, that's a new one for me. This new system that you have here behind you on the screen, was it installed during the COVID pandemic?
I think so.
It might have, it might have been, not necessarily because of COVID, but we, we did revamp our, our technology.
Well, I asked because the last time I was here, I was asking you about water meters and the amount that the county purchased. And you called up somebody from Public Works instantly on my question of how many units you purchased. Now, in the county, when you convene your meetings, who is all watching in the county on this system?
Basically, anybody that wants to.
Yeah, that, that number changes a lot. Currently, we've got entirely electronically nineteen participants.
That are county employees or officials?
Uh, we've got attendees that are ten. One is anonymous, another one is a staff member, another one's a citizen, a cit, a staff member, a staff member. I think someone from the, from the Port of Longview, so it, it's all over the map. It's, it's completely open to anybody who comes on board as a viewer. In order to be seen up there in some way, you go through the, through the clerk of the board, who will empanel you.
Going through internet technology devices, cell phones and whatnot, and what the Israelis did in their war in the Middle East, contacting and overloading I T devices and cell phones. And then, right here locally, let's take the Wallace case over at the Longview City Council. Now, somehow, they knew the person that won her lawsuit against the city of Longview was at the Kelso Theater. And Kelso Police was involved, County Sheriff was involved. My question to you is, do they have the technology to track any citizen in Calis County through an internet technology device or a cellphone?
We don't. We wouldn't know how the city of Longview operates.
Well, I'm talking, it was a county sheriff who went with the Kelso police officer to the Kelso Theater, tracking a cellphone that supposedly belonged to Councilwoman Wallace.
Yeah, on the specifics, I don't know. On the general stuff, I used to work in the telecom business and had to deal with the NSA in that. I can, that was a long time ago now. And it was remarkable at the time. All I can tell you is, if you know who Edward Snowden is, you know that he is telling it like it is.
So am I to believe that our local law enforcement now has the ability to track us citizens here in Calis County through their I T device and a cellphone? Apparently, reading the Wallace case, they do. And she won her lawsuit.
It's actually fairly easy to do that tracking on a cellphone. Interesting stories. I worked on Global Star, and they were able to track the drug dealers who were in the middle of the desert in the Sonora, thinking that they weren't being tracked. Anyhow, that, that's just a cutie. I don't know why you're asking, but I think my advice to you is assume there's very little that you're doing that is not exposed. It's, it's not a comforting thought, I can assure you.
So we've attained George Orwell's nineteen eighty-four?
Yes.
Okay. Now the more mundane matters. I submitted three public records requests on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. One of them has been dealt with by Commissioner Weber. And all it seems was done on that request was the termination of the, your manager at that time, Axel Swanson. And I was after the two names from the Daily News article that he was sitting on for two years, and all I got was a name search from your public records person. They just went through the files here at the county and just did a name search, which was basically useless. And the only thing of note was his handwritten letter of resignation. But no reason for the termination and who were the two people, but I'll let that go because watching these proceedings here, you've already introduced me to the person, Commissioner Weber, who sat on the request. So that's, that's gone. The two others, the two other formal requests that were submitted on the same, well, almost the same day, November of twenty twenty-three, one was in the Building and Planning Department when I believe the Public Works Department was, you had, the commissioners had signed a contract to redo the records in Public Works, and they just happened to be in this hearing room when I asked the request. And they buttonholed me out in the hallway, saying, well, you ought to send this request to the state auditor, which, which I didn't do. Maybe I should have. And it concerned an employee that was unduly coerced in your Department of Building and Planning. And they were quite, whoever you hired, I didn't write who you hired to redo the public records and public works. They were quite adamant on me sending the request to the state auditor's office. So that was the second one that nothing was done on. And the last one concerned the Calis Public Facilities Development Authority. And I went to the secretary over there at the time and asked for the name of the board members and their authorities and who appointed them, their bylaws, agency structure of the event center, and the name of the event center manager, who hired her, responsibilities and duties, and I got nothing on that request. And I went personally to whoever is in that office over there. And she just kind of, well, I don't have time for you, you know, don't bother me. And I said the same thing when I submitted this request. So apparently, when you file an official request for access to public records, it doesn't mean much in this county. Those are the three formal requests that I didn't get any response to.
So, so Steve, you used a descriptor, which I don't think actually exists, and you said Public Facilities Development Authority?
Right.
Right.
And you have two, two authorities.
There's two, there's two development authorities that I'm aware of, one of which we created. And that is the, that's the mechanism under which the nine-one-one dispatch center is, is operated.
That wasn't my request.
And then the city of Longview did create a public development authority that is the agency that's involved with bringing about the hotel at, at the event centers. So, so what, I mean, the, the fact that you asked for public development authority information that doesn't exist is probably the reason you didn't find any documents. But I think you were just trying to find out, you know, how the fairground operation works. And there's, there's two different agencies, for the most part. You know, this, Calis County does own mo, most of that forty acres, forty-eight acres, that is the fairgrounds with the rodeo and, and the fair buildings. The, the event center is the old commercial building with some additional meeting rooms added on. And that was financed by this Public Facilities District, which was created under state law to operate public facilities, to finance. And we, that financing for that, it grew, comes from a portion of the state's sales tax that is designated for that. Counties all over the state have these facility districts. So when you create the, the facility district, the Board of Directors then are appointed by us. They have a working agreement with the staff at the fairgrounds to, to operate the, the event center. So she and the director there has a small So she and the director there has a s- small staff, you know, it does the, the, does the uh, you know, the janitorial and helping set up rooms and, and overall maintenance. Um, we also have a special con- they have, they have a special contract with a restaurateur that provides the meals, operates that kitchen there, so.
I'm familiar with all that.
Okay.
But you got one group with their pictures on the wall over at the, your so-called event center. Then you got another group that meets over at the Longview City Hall that's dealing with the same project.
Okay. That's, that's the PDA that the city of Longview created.
And you just had a, a member resign and we discussed him during the same time these requests. And I believe you appointed Claire Hague, right? To replace him.
Claire Haughey, yes.
And, and his picture at the same time. And we got into it about a conflict of interest, if you remember, about this person who just resigned. And he, he was on both boards at the same time, and that was my point. Conflict of interest, well, he's gone now. And you appointed this, I believe she was the former budget director of the county, right?
Yes.
So you got two boards. And one deals with the white elephant called the Columbia Theater and the other one co- deals with the event center and you had one person on both boards.
So, so, so actually, the public facilities board with the monies that they have coming in does have an agreement with the city of Longview to oversee the financing of some remodeling. So it's the same board that does the event center as well as overseeing the Columbia Theater?
Well, let's put it this way. When I went to the event center, you have pictures on the wall and whoever that girl was, oh, I don't have time for you. And she couldn't tell me who the names were. And then I go over to the city hall and sit in on that meeting and I see the gentleman who we got into it about conflict of interest, Commissioner Dahl, about how the hell could he be on, well, he's not on it now, is he? He resigned and you put Claire Hague in her place, his place. Talk about, y- y- you know, if you want to talk about reducing government, this situation right here is where you should do it. But don't get it confused with nine-one-one. I know that's a separate entity now. Another bureaucracy of government that I don't know how the hell was formed. We, we probably voted on it. Maybe we didn't. I'm not sure. But those were the three requests and I'm not belaboring the Swanson firing. Because you've already indicated, maybe you don't know it, that who was involved with that. Just by watching you operate here, it's like, hey, that's what caused that, you know, just listening to you people and me not saying anything. Just like Claire Hague and the, the funny thing is when the gentleman resigned, his name wasn't in the papers. Or the documents where he resigned his position. That was kind of funny. But anyway, those are the three requests that were not honored officially. Now, now here comes the uh, test.
We're, we're really moving into public hearing. We need to.
Well, I only have one paragraph here for you.
Okay.
Remember we had, we had a discussion about this.
Let's do, go ahead, do your paragraph.
Are you con- are, you know, same thing happened before in the same situation and this gentleman disrupted it.
I'm trying to give you some time here, okay?
But you're not handling this situation here.
I'm handling right here. I'm telling, read your paragraph.
"It can't happen here. To match the power of Main Street, Babbitt and Eros Smith's cautionary tale about the fragility of democracy, it is an alarming, eerie, timeless look at how fascism could take hold in America. When the country was largely oblivious to Hitler's aggression, it juxtaposed a sharp political satire with the chilling realistic rise of a president who becomes a dictator to save the nation from welfare cheats, sex crimes, and a liberal press. Called a message to thinking Americans by the Springfield Republican when it was published. It can't happen here is a shockingly present novel that remains as fresh and contemporary as today's news this very day." Now my question to you three, when was this published?
I don't know.
I think it was in the early fifties, late forties, early fifties.
You of all people I was counting on, being you were a civics instructor. This was published as a review by the Chicago Times in nineteen thirty-five. And it's Sinclair Lewis's, "It Can't Happen Here." And we're deciding that this very day, if it will happen here. I was counting on you, Commissioner Weber, of all people. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, we'll move into a little bit behind, but the nine-thirty public hearing.
So good morning, Commissioner Susan Eugenous, county engineer. I'm here today with Anna Lundey, who's our, one of our right-of-way agents to open a public hearing for two different franchises. Uh, we will start with the Zayo Group LLC and I will hand it over to Anna.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioners. Today in front of us, we have a ten-year non-exclusive franchise for telecommunications for Zayo Group. Zayo has existing uh, utility within our current right-of-way. It spans from Burke Road at the north end of Calitz County all the way through uh, Woodland entering into Clark County. It's a ten-year non-exclusive franchise. The equipment that they have are utility vaults that are buried underground which provide access to switchgear for telecommunications equipment.
Hey. Any questions?
I'm curious about uh, the standards that you don't control, but that these people have to abide by a whole bunch of FCC kind of, kind of standards? Is that true?
Yes, there are standards that they must adhere to as well as the UAP established in two thousand and one for Calitz County, the utility accommodations policy.
Hey, we, the county, don't have to do anything there. It's, it's not our obligation to do the policing.
Correct.
Okay, so this is completely perfunctory?
Well, if I unders- if I understand it correctly, th- the, the franchise agreement requires the businesses to repair any damage that is done to our rights-of-way during the course of their, their regular maintenance activities. They're obligated to, you know, hold harmless. In, in, in other words, without a franchise agreement, um, they still have the right to ha- you know, th- they, they can use the right-of-way. Um, but they're not required to re- repair anything that they do. The franchise agreement gives us the hammer to say, no, you've gotta, you gotta turn it back into the, the, the condition that you found it.
So they will be required whenever they do any work in the right-of-way to get a permit from us. And if they do install in the right-of-way without a franchise and without a permit, uh, they are considered an encroachment and we can make them remove all of their equipment. The other item that is included in all of our franchise agreements is when we're doing a road project, for whatever reason, we give them proper notice and they are required to relocate their utility at no cost to us for us to complete our project.
The reason I asked my questions was, th- this is completely a non-political kind of thing. We don't judge anything and uh, consequently, the non-exclusiveness, anybody, we treat everybody the same regardless.
Correct. With telecommunications, it has to be non-exclusive.
Okay.
So is there any new construction that you're aware of with the result of these franchise agreements?
Not at this time.
So th- th- this company, um, Zayo is the most recent name of a pre-existing company that's already in the county, right? We're just updating the, we're, we're just doing the franchise agreement to make sure our rights are protected.
They are not expired, are they not?
Zayo's existing franchise did expire last year. So they wish to enact a new franchise agreement, not necessarily renew, but establish a brand new for the next ten years.
You don't remember the name of the old company from ten years ago, because I, I know it wasn't Zayo.
There are three companies that collectively do business together. Rogers has conduit, Zayo has the uh, vault boxes and the lit and dark fibers are owned by the next public hearing box.
Thank you. We recently around here went through the traffic castle of the gas main being, or mains or the gas lines, not mains. And, and uh, with, with the ru- ru- right-of-way, I'm curious as to, do we have the concept of having it digging up the streets once to put a, put a conduit in there and then everybody else doesn't have to tear up the streets except at a very narrow number of spots?
We currently do not um, run our streets that way in our franchises. Uh, they all put in, in their own individual vaults. We do try when we're constructing bridges to hang some conduits on there, um, just for future users, because it's a lot easier to do it during the original construction.
And we do that not because we're gonna make any money off it. We're just trying to make it convenient for essentially the public who uses the services.
Yes, and so that uh, it, there's no damage done to the bridge wa- in the future when things are at it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll open up public comment if there is any on this. Okay. Not seeing any. We'll close public comment. Your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the ten-year franchise agreement with Zayo Group LLC for the next ten years.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Last chance for questions. Okay, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're right at time to, looks like to move into nine forty-five, so.
All right, moving along. We now in front of us have a public hearing for MOX Networks to have a ten-year non-exclusive franchise for telecommunication. It also spans from Lewis County on the north side of us to Clark County on the south. Uh, the utility is currently existing within Calitz County right-of-way. Uh, it is a telecom infrastructure company that offers dark fiber wave services, dark fiber channels. So it's essentially a fiber optic network. And they wish to have a ten-year non-exclusive franchise and they do not have a pre-existing, even though their equipment is within our right-of-way.
Again, out of my own curiosity, I, I mean, these two motions, these, these two uh, hearings are identical language except for the name of the company. So I, I, I understand all that. Uh, is there any grounds under which we would not grant this? So it would seem to me if the board said no, that's kind of arbitrary and subjects us to all kinds of issues. Is, is all that true?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll open this to public comment if there is any.
Is ten years a normal timeframe for a franchise agreement?
It is becoming the standard.
And then if these companies, if all of a sudden they were bought or taken over by another company, are these binding on the next company or we gotta redo this?
They would need to renew.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment period.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the public, uh, the public execution. Doesn't sound right. Uh, I, we approve the resolution granting MOX Networks LCCA ten-year franchises as been presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Hey, I'm speech impaired. I can't help it.
Go ahead. Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still available if there's any other public comment. If not, we will adjourn. I'm not seeing any. So remember, uh, we do have, if you're interested, we have a budget at one-thirty today and a couple of meetings tomorrow, one-thirty and two-thirty. With that, we will adjourn.